Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
We're ready to start right now. Welcome to the Westland Planning Commission meeting. We'll do a roll call, please.
No.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I've lost my patriotic insert. If you will stand with us and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while I was up, if I remember something I'm supposed to do. Ken Sharp usually does this, and he's recovering from some surgery. So tonight, I'm the guy that's going to be doing it. So it might be a little kinky, but you'll be all right. If there's anything that you'd like to discuss with the Planning Commission that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. Anybody have anything? Nothing? Very good. Then we'll do a roll call, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, roll call. Durante.
Present.
Bolts.
Present.
Redford.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Sharp.
Excuse.
Absence. Excused. Skezak.
Here.
Statchow.
Here.
Present. More. Here.
Well, I had a chance to go over the minutes of March the 2nd. Are there any questions, additions, or deletions? This was in order.
Just one. So moved for approval of minutes.
As I said.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions regarding any item?
There's one. Yes, there's one change on the agenda.
All right, if you will, Mr. Durante. Is that the one Mr. Mo took care of?
Yeah, there was one change on the agenda, right?
Uh, one modification to the minutes, uh, eight to eleven. And that was noted in draft copy. I have to be responsible in the final. Modification of original motion to accommodate the... To mention the change in the minutes.
All right, Mr. Durante. All in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Both? So moved, so ordered. Citizens' comments at this time? Do we have any? Any on the right? Any on the right? Any on... Oh, on the left, yes, sir.
I'm here regarding the item number two.
Come up to the podium, please.
What do you... I'm here regarding the second item on the agenda. Do I speak now, or do I wait until you get to that?
We'll go in order on the agenda.
It's all late.
Okay, all right. Any other thing? Nothing else? All right. Item is twenty-two fifty-five A, Final Phase of a PUD Development Plan for Attached Condominiums at thirty-three oh sixty-five Ann Arbor Trail. Mr. Mo, if you will.
Thanks, Vice Chair. I know the planning commission is currently familiar with this project by now, but I'll probably say that the president is sitting on it and squashing. I'll just go over some of my notes here. For the record, the subject property is located on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail. It's highlighted in clip one screen. It is just east of Farmington Road and comprises of about one acre and currently contains a single camping dwelling. The property is zoned R... I'm sorry. The property was zoned R2 single camping residential in the city council on December twenty-first of 2021, resulted to the need to pave the way for the construction of condominium development. And if approved tonight, the existing dwelling will acknowledge to condominium development. The condominium development will contain one egress point and one egress point of connecting a one-way access road through the site providing access to each individual unit. There are six units made up in these single buildings. There's two different unit types proposed. One is a two-bedroom with floor area of about twelve hundred square feet, and the other is a three-bedroom with about fifteen hundred square feet. This is a ranch-style development, approximately twenty feet in height. Each unit will contain, or include, a single driveway depending on the unit type and also one parking space and the one-car attached garage. Maybe nothing too total, just complying with the code. The planning commission at the last meeting requested the addition of guest parking spaces to the site plan, and those are being accommodated at the northwestern corner here and the southern corner here.
Thank you. A petitioner, if you'll come forward, please. State your name for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Reno Suave with Infinity Homes and Company.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we, from our last meeting, we came through. We kind of put our heads together and worked to get the revised plan. I think the comments were really productive at the last meeting, and hopefully we met the comments that we're looking to move forward, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Members of the commission? Yes, sir?
I noted the change in the final site plan. I very much appreciate your... probably your effort in accommodating our concerns. It speaks very highly of your professionalism and your commitment to making Westland happy with you, and we're, of course, ecstatic to have you.
Yeah, likewise, thank you. So it's our third development in the last few years, so we're excited, too.
Go ahead.
Are there no further comments?
No further... Are there any further comments? Oh, you have one.
I do.
Oh, you liked it.
Huh?
You liked it.
Like what?
Liked being here, I guess.
I do. I come back every month, a few months, just because of this. So my comment is, our unit, we live right... Our unit is right to the east, adjoining this. So it's nice that he added parking, especially for the old people that might not read bylaws before they buy a place. So... But when you put the parking on the northeast corner, however many places, three, four, they're going to be facing the back of her unit. So my question is, are they going to put shrubs or something in so we don't look at a parking lot?
Okay.
Did you see what we're saying there right now? Because with the house there, we just look at the scrub trees and their front lawn. To move parking on that northeast corner, that those cars face our units. We don't want to look at a parking lot. We'd rather look at trees and shrubs and bushes.
Mr. Ayew, you have anything?
Uh, there are some plantings there that are reflected on the site plan. There's also some existing trees that will remain on your property unless you have worked out. I know you guys were discussing the removal of trees on your property.
We don't know where the property line is. And there's like these scrub trees, and I think there's a marker like kind of in the middle of them. And they're pretty scrub ugly trees, but I think we share they're scrub trees. Do we not?
Yeah, we said we removed the ones that are dead. There are going to be evergreens along.
Like pine trees or something to block?
Yeah, we're going to be putting evergreens along Ann Arbor Trail. Basically, we don't need to put them on the west side of Manhattan Square, but we'll put a row of trees there if we have to.
Right, just so we don't have to look at parked cars. And we still have the... Yeah, we still feel like we live by our homes. I got it.
Thank you.
There are, Vice Chair, evergreen trees along that eastern property line. All of them, about halfway down from Ann Arbor Trail.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience, please, if you will?
And also to the administration for clarification, just so the public does understand that there will be some type of barrier as far as shrubbery or trees or whatever that would be running along that one side that they're referring to?
There are going to be three evergreen trees planted along this eastern property line over here, but only about halfway running south of Ann Arbor Trail. So starting here, all the way to about here.
I will elaborate to say there's only one unit that their deck backs up to this project because the other unit, well, they back up a little bit, too. So the first couple of units of our complex back up to the new buildings. And that's why I said we don't want to look at, and in order to, we have to look at a parking lot.
So that's a driveway on the side?
Right, and then actually, no, they'll park heading... I understand they will park heading east, correct? The parking spots will be heading east when they go in. So even on the street, and I'm sorry I'm not standing there, but on the street, because it's only one in, one out, we just want to make sure that, like, the headlights and stuff are not always shining.
Sure, I'll just address it with one last half of the record for everyone. Here are three of the parking spaces here. There's six proposed. Here are three, and here are the others. Here is the nearest building. I'm not sure if this is where the lady lives.
Okay, if it's the end building, yes.
But the parking spaces are shifted a little towards, to the north of you. In addition to that, there are some evergreen trees that are going to be planted here to leave any...
Please.
Yes, and I, too, would like to thank you for making those changes. I know that it's more than what it looks like on paper, so appreciate the efforts on your part and that following through with some of the greenery that these ladies are interested in having put in that area, trees or shrubbery, whatever it was, just to kind of kind of slash it a little bit. So, yeah, I would like to make a motion to send case two-two-five.
Say, a public hearing, ma'am?
Pardon?
It's a public hearing.
It is?
I'm not a lover.
It's not, is it?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Two-five-five.
Yeah, with...
This is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
Okay, I moved to... Oh, I didn't see that one. Okay. All right. I moved to close public hearing, and I would like to send... Make a motion to send case number two-two-five-five-one. Final Phase for PUD Development Plan for the Attached Condominium Development, three-three-zero-six-five Ann Arbor Trail, south side of Ann Arbor Trail, east of Farmington. That is petition to be forwarded to the city council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. We'll go with you. I heard your voice first, best ear. Any... Nothing else? Roll call, pardon?
With respect, the normal rules, I'm assuming, are being waived.
Yes, within the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that the normal rules.
But we're waiving the normal rules.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Roll call.
All right, roll call. Vote to approve case number... Recommend to approve case number two-two-five-five-eight. Run.
Sometime you can go like, oh.
Yes.
Bolts.
Yes.
Redford.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Skezak.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
More.
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to case number twenty-two fifty-six A, Special Land Use and Site Approval for Proposed Marijuana Retail Business, eighty-four seventy-five Inkster Road, west side of Inkster, north of Ann Arbor Trail. Mr. Yutumai is here today somewhere. If you will.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Got a lengthy one for you on this. Try to do this quickly. The subject properties here are located on the west side of Inkster Road, just north of Ann Arbor Trail. The property comprises of about twenty-nine thousand square feet, about a hundred and eighty feet of frontage along Inkster Road. They're both owned CB3, General Commercial Business District. The property at eight-four five-five north of Inkster Road. That's the small property to the south of... I'm sorry, that's the one, no, the large one. Sorry about that. It is currently vacant. The one to the south has a collapsed building on it, and is currently unoccupied. The petitioner proposes to combine both properties, constructing approximately three thousand square foot building that will contain a marijuana retail business. The subject property does meet the separation requirements set forth in the marijuana business ordinance, although from a residential-owned property. The petitioner is seeking site plan and special land use approval to proceed to reproject it. So some site, design, characteristics. This is a street view of what the existing conditions look like. There's that large property that's vacant, and this is the small building. This is the proposed site plan that's on the screen. The site will be accessed by one driveway. About Inkster Road there will be an enclosed driveway with about twenty-five feet. Site provides the parking requirement for marijuana retail business. Thirty off-street parking spaces are required, and they're here, proposed. The site does not directly back up to residential. There's a significant separation there, and there's also a separate property back there. So there is no requirement for six-foot-tall concrete screen wall. Repose along the west side, grassiest street, including decorated landscapes. Screen wall, you typically see in the PDA, is provided along the Inkster Road frontage. Marijuana business, as you already know, may be open to vote between the hours ten a.m. and nine p.m. However, there can be more employees, contractors, or other personnel in the building outside the business. The proposed building will be constructed of high-quality building materials. I believe you have the rendering in your backup. The building also complies with all the bulk requirements, including ice block coverage and all the required setbacks. A stormwater management plan will need to be approved by county, so that part of the conditions. Esterior lighting is proposed to be a full-stone and full-duty elevator, complying with the White Order. And finally, the administration and planning department are recommending approval contingent with the conditions that I'll read over in a second. And departmental requirements and recommendations. So the quality conditions are the facility must employ a facility-wide control plan relevant to marijuana retailers, control order, a security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance. I believe that has already been sent to the police department and on file to the planning department. The marijuana business license C shall enter into a legally architected benefits agreement. The petitioner has already signed, submitted, and submitted that. And continue compliance with all applicable local and state laws, including but not limited to the city's business ordinance. If you violate the health act ordinance or any state laws, it's going to be a rush. Of the Westland Marijuana Business Ordinance and subject to the application of the Marijuana Business License. All signage and advertising must comply with all applicable zoning ordinance requirements and the marijuana business ordinance. And finally, I mentioned this earlier, but hours of operation to the public shall be restricted between the hours ten a.m. and nine p.m. That's all I got. Finally, applicant and business owners in the state.
Petitioner, step forward, please. Identify yourself for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Noah Harfush. I am the attorney that represents the entity that owns this parcel, or parcels. I don't have a lot to add. I think Mr. Ayew did a fine job of telling you what this project is about. I think the development will be a great development for Westland. It's consistent with future land use intentions. It's something that proposes a new building with enhanced landscaping, all-new construction. And with respect to the contingent conditions and contingencies that Mr. Ayew outlined, we have submitted previously with our application to Westland an order plan. We will follow through with that order plan. We also submitted a security plan that is above what the state's requirements are for a security plan under the applicable law. We already signed a community benefits agreement and submitted it to the city of Westland. And under that agreement, we are proposing to provide Westland with continuous support and donations, monetary donations. So we hope to be a benefit and asset to the community. With respect to signage and hours of operation, we are going to fully comply with your signage ordinance, and of course, there won't be a sign unless the city approves it. With respect to hours of operation, we will only operate between ten a.m. to nine p.m. With that being said, I would welcome any questions, and hopefully you guys can see the benefit of this project to the city, and we'll approve it.
I have a question. Final order, this is a... Another public hearing.
Yes.
The public should have an opportunity to report what I does.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to it? Yes, sir? You'll come up there and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Pete Simakis. I own the home at eight-five-eight-one Inkster Road, which is the first residential home.
Next to this?
In the group of homes. So I'll be the fourth address away from the proposed site. The home has been leased for the past ten years to developmentally disabled individuals. It's a group home. Okay, so handicap people live there. I'm concerned about the relationship and the clientele that'll be coming to this facility, that it won't be a good fit. I know our row of homes currently that are on Inkster Road are scheduled to be all turned over to be commercial eventually someday. So if someone buys my home, let's say, and turns it into a doctor's office, it'll always remain as a commercial, never to revert back to residential. But it's residential right now, and I don't intend to change any use for it. So my concern is, is that, given the nature of this business and the clientele that'll be coming, I see in the city of Inkster, the Flower Bowl does the same thing, and they have a parade of cars coming and going. They're five rows deep, sorry. They're five rows deep, and the bacon lot across next door to them, and it's constant business. Right now, we are a quiet individual, quiet businesses. The Dave's Lawnmower, or Car, you know, Small Engine Repair, it's a quiet business. The bookkeeper that in that orange building is proposed to be purchased, quiet business. Been quiet. This will enhance a lot of traffic through there with that type of clientele. That don't think would be a good fit for my people that live in that home that are disabled. I like to consider that. It may fall within that squared footage, the distance from the building, from that property, but it's right, you know, I'll be the fourth door away from them. So how's that work? So I'm speaking on behalf of the people that live in that home for the past ten years. That's their home. So unless the city buys us all out and tears up all those houses, it's not going to change for a long while. So I appreciate its development and want it to improve, but at what cost? What impact it's going to have on the existing community that's there right now?
The one building was a tax man, is that what?
Yeah, it was a tax man, that orange building, right.
And then there's the bonsai place down the street that's still there?
Well, the bonsai is on the opposite end of that strip of properties, right. Near, closer to Joy Road. But between the bonsai and that blue building right next to me, we're all houses. We're all residents. I don't live there, like I said. I lease my home to the handicap.
You live there also?
No, sir, I do not.
Oh, you don't?
I lease my home to the handicap.
Okay.
They've been there for about ten years. It's a barrier for your home, for your wheelchairs.
Mr. Ayew, what's the zoning?
The zoning for all the properties along Inkster is commercial.
Commercial.
CB3.
So it's currently used as residential until someone should buy it, you know, if I should sell it and they turn it over, they can make it commercial easily for that. But right now, it's residential. And my neighbors...
I understand.
And I'm sure them, we're all residential. It's all you get in a bonsai house.
So you're...
Eighty-five, eighty-four... Eighty-five, eighty-one. I'll be the fourth house.
The fourth house down?
I'll be the fourth address away from the proposed site.
Four.
Fourth, yeah.
Okay. What's in between?
Next door to the proposed site is Dave's Small Engine Lawnmower.
There's a lawnmower shop in between?
There's a lawnmower shop, is there. And then next, north of him.
Small.
The Small Engine Repair.
Yeah.
And then the next parcel, which they just tore down a white house. I don't know what, for what development's going to happen there, but that person owns both that locate, that property, and then that blue home next door to me, which used to be a house, is now commercial. There's a yoga, I think there's a yoga studio there. Quiet, obviously. It says yoga on the sign. Do they use it? I don't know.
I believe that one would be vacant. This site, I would like to remind the commission, does comply with the... With the ordinance relative to being away from residential-owned properties.
But I'm not zoned residential now. I see what you're saying. I know what you're saying. So it's a catch twenty-two. It still be used as residential, though it's not zoned residential. So how does that work in the mix of all this development? I don't know. That's why I'm coming here to talk about it, or bring it to your attention.
It appears to be multi-use. It has been for years, is that right? So there's been businesses along there all the time, is that right?
Where Dave's Small Engine Repair and that bookkeeper.
The gas station.
The gas station, yeah. Yeah, that's a little quadrant of that segment of Inkster Road has been commercial, right.
And so it goes all the way down, all the way to the bar, right?
All the way to the bar, but what I'm getting at is, from my home to the house right next door to the bonsai house are all residential homes, small homes as they are. But my home is a big home, eighteen hundred, almost nineteen hundred square feet. So they're not all commercial, though it's zoned commercial.
Well, yeah, but it's multi-use. It has been for thirty-five, forty years. Has been multi-use. And when you bought it, was it commercial then?
No, it was residential.
Oh, was residential then? When did they change it to commercial, do you know?
Whenever the city zoned it. I don't know when that happened to be.
Do you know, Mr. Ayew?
I do not know when the... Sorry, I'm going to speak up because my mic's not working. I don't know when the property was rezoned to commercial. I imagine that it was several, several years ago. The residential use is legal, not performing, so when it goes away, the residential use cannot be reestablished at the site because, again, the site is zoned... Because the site is zoned CB3, General Business, General Commercial Business District.
So for as long... May I ask a question? For as long as it's used as commercial, I'm sorry, residential, it remains for residential use, correct?
You can still maintain the residential use so long as it's used for residential purposes, but that doesn't mean that it's zoned for residential. So any modification or growth or anything of the nature of improving the existing residential use.
No, I wouldn't. I mean, if I petition the city for making a, I don't know, a mobile home park, because I have one point one acres of land, or outside storage, I could come because it does commercial, and that would apply to commercial. But I see my property has that propensity to be converted over, used as commercial. Not all do. It's a nice thing to have, but in the same token, it's a bad thing to have because I have a new client, not client, but a new neighbor coming in that wants to sell marijuana, and the only thing they want to do with that is get high. And I have a house with handicap people living in it. I don't think it's a good mix. That's all I'm saying. So I would ask that you reconsider it. I know this man's investing a ton of money there, but I'm just now becoming aware of it.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I be...
Yes, please.
Sir, I see that you're... And I'm... Please correct me if I'm mistaken. I believe you're speaking to our standard... speaking to our standards, item number six, proposed special land use will be compatible with adjacent uses of land. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Now, you did mention that you were worried about the clientele that they would be attracting.
Yes.
But you, you didn't mention what you are concerned about, about that clientele. And I want to understand what you're, what you're referring to.
Their purpose is to come by marijuana to get high. And my people that live there are handicapped.
Are you concerned that they would be getting high on site?
No, I'm concerned.
Because that's not legal?
No, I wouldn't hope not. But I'm concerned if they're walking up to the house, walking up to the business and walking past my home and they're high, I don't want them messing with my clients as they're sitting on their porch in their wheelchairs, not knowing what's going on.
Well, that's a matter for the police to take up. That would be illegal, illegal behavior.
I'm just saying that what's going on, what we have living there, and I just want you to be aware of it. If you could do something about it, fine. If you can't, that's fine too. Just bring it to your attention.
The purchase and sale and use of marijuana is now legal in the state of Michigan.
I understand that, sir.
I don't see your, your concern and how it actually is relevant.
I just think it hasn't...
You're assuming a slippery slope between what is actually a legal operation in the state of Michigan.
I'm not saying it's illegal.
And what you're concerned about, what might happen if people misbehave.
I just don't think it's a good mix. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I, and to that, to that level, we have heard your concern.
Okay.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr....
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You say you have a group home there?
Yes, sir.
How many people you got living there?
Three.
Three. So you no longer have a residence, you have a group home, which is a business.
I don't run the business. I'm the landlord.
Yeah, but it's still a business. It's not, it's not a resident anymore. You've got a group home.
You got to live there.
Yeah, it's on.
And you're in compliance because that is a business area.
But you could have a group home in any residential area. You don't have to have it be like, it'd be commercial.
Why?
Special land use.
Yes.
All right.
But I'm just saying, you're in compliance with the ordinance too, because you are a business.
I understand.
Okay.
All right.
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Just a friendly reminder to turn...
Yes, sir. Pardon me?
Just a friendly reminder to turn the mics on for cable.
Your mic?
Everyone's mic.
Was your mic on? It's on.
My mic was off.
It's... All right. Any, I'm sorry, in the back, please, if you will.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, if you'll identify yourself.
I own the properties next to, so this one and the one below, the one, the one I took down the house.
You own that house?
Yeah, I own both properties. So the question is, what I'm proposing next is commercial on the front, then we have the alley, then the back, I was proposing to the city a multi-residential.
What alley?
So we're gonna have apartments.
What alley?
There is an alley. It splits between the front and the back. So this, this site is about 500 linear foot. So there is, there is about 150 linear foot or 200 feet on the front, then there is an alley, actually an easement, which is sanitary and electrical lines pass through. And then the back, it's all empty property, which is, I was coming forward to propose a multi-residential there.
You're 400 feet deep, is that right?
More, probably more than 400. This is, each one is one acre. Each property, from the one I own, they're one acre. So the reason why I bought them, I wanna do like a strip mall on the front, which is commercial, complies with what you have. But in the back, we wanted to put a multi-residential.
Well, if you're gonna use it for commercial in the front, you're gonna need parking.
Oh, definitely.
So you can use it in the back, right?
We have sufficient parking.
Point of order, is this relevant to the current discussion?
No, I, I understand. I don't know what he's...
No, I'm asking, does this affect my step going in with a residential?
Excuse me. When you bought the property, did you buy it as commercial property?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then you knew it was commercial property.
Mr. Vice Chair, sir, is this relevant to the current discussion?
No, it's not. I'm sorry. That's, that, if you...
In that case, I have a motion, or I have a request that we move on to the orders of the day.
All right, go ahead.
I can answer, can I answer this gentleman's question real quick?
Go ahead, yeah.
Just really quickly.
No objection.
There is a vacated alley over there. There's some utilities running underground. But proposing a residential development within 200 feet of a marijuana business location is permitted. It's, it's not the other way around, but in this case, it would be fine.
That's all I wanna hear.
Did you say it was a vacated alley, is that right? A vacated alley. Huh. Well, that's different than an alley. All right. Go ahead. Mr. Rappaport, you said you had a motion?
No, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
I have a question first.
What? Go ahead.
The gentleman that answered the call that said he did not want to see the same thing that was happening in Inkster and Flower Bowl, the people lined up outside. So I wanted to be able to address that, say, yeah, but that's not gonna happen.
Thanks again for your time. So I want to be very clear about what our development's proposing. With our development comes 24/7 surveillance and security. That includes security on site via security guards. They will not only monitor the interior of the premises, but they will monitor and maintain the exterior of the premises. What we've also provided the city with our application is a noise control plan. With that plan, what we are providing is an exact way as to how we will be dealing with people that may be loiter, or how, if people are doing excessive noise with their cars or whatnot. The simple answer is we'll contact the police department, the local police department. We feel that with respect to the 24/7 surveillance, with the lighting plan that we have outside, we are gonna be providing a safe area, an area that's not gonna cause commotion at all. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, pretty much.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Any other, anybody in front of the audience wish to speak? Mr. Rappaport, then.
Thank you very much. At this, if there are no additional comments from the, from the board, from the commissioners, seeing none at this time, I'd like to move to close the public hearing. We have the normal rules. Send case number 2256A, special land use, site plan approval for proposed marijuana retail business at 8475 Inkster, west side of Inkster, North Van Arbor Trail, Jeffrey, by Jeffrey Tuma, to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to departmental requirements and recommendations, and in short form, the six provisions as outlined in the site plan proposal.
Supported.
Supported by Ms. Richards.
Second.
I got it. Support, moving, supported. Other roll call on this one, then?
Roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2256A. Deranti?
Yes.
Volks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Spizak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Hornbuck?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you very much. Case number 1582C, site plan approval for closed ranch home at 32,001 Cherry Hill, south side of Cherry Hill, west of Mermon Road, Presbyterian Village of Michigan.
All right. Thanks, Vice Chair. The subject property here is located on the south side of Cherry Hill, tucked between the existing Presbyterian Village of Michigan Senior Living Facility and the municipal, or Mack Mayfield Municipal Golf Course. It's this oddly shaped parcel back here that is heavily wooded. The property is currently zoned GAR, that's our garden apartment residential district, currently vacant, containing, again, a substantial amount of mature trees. The petitioner is proposing to construct 35 attached ranch homes that will serve as independent living units for people 55 years of age or older. The proposal provides access to the site from an existing drive located at the existing PVM site to the north. This is the drive that will connect to the PVM site to the north. There's also an additional access drive proposed from the former TCF Bank site, which is now vacant, to the east, which is the next item on your agenda, and proposed to be renovated into a pace facility. We'll talk about that in a bit. But this is the other access point right here, where the bank is. The proposed exterior building materials will include brick and siding. Proposed parking complies with the requirement of the zoning ordinance, which calls for two parking spaces per unit. And there is also seven guest parking spaces, which also meets, I think actually more than seven, but the minimum requirement is seven. They do comply with the guest parking requirement. That's a quick shot of the site plan. This is a rendering of the site plan and also a snapshot of what the landscaping proposal looks like. Throughout the site, site lighting is provided in accordance with the site, I'm sorry, the lighting ordinance. The development will contain a stormwater system. You can kind of see it over here. It's going to be located on the TCF parcel. That will be shared by the Pace Center and this development as well. It will be in compliance with best management practices and subject to Wayne County approval. The site does, or the proposal does comply with minimum lot size requirements, setbacks, lot coverage. The building height is one story, 14 feet approximately, I believe, and the minimum floor area for these units is 1170. The administration and planning department are recommending approval. This is what the elevation will look like. PVM has brought a, a team with them to discuss this in more detail if you, if you'd like. That's all I got.
Is that it?
Yep.
Petisher, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Petru. I'm Director of Real Estate and Development with Presbyterian Villages of Michigan. And for those of you who may not be aware of who PVM is, we're a faith-based nonprofit owner, operator, and developer of senior housing in the state of Michigan. The Village of Westland Campus, we've, was developed about 30 years ago. As part of that initial campus development, it included the 7.8 acres of land that Mr. Ayoub talked about tonight, what I call the golf course property, that was always intended for future development. By the way, with me tonight, several of my colleagues, Michelle White is our executive director of the Village of Westland Campus. In the row right behind them is Dave Root and Shannon Pettit with Giffords Webster Engineering. I'll introduce this other gentleman on the next, next program, or next one that we'll be reviewing. So we're proposing to develop 35, what we call ranch-style homes, in a series of, four of them are duplex buildings, and nine of them are in tri, what we'll call triplex buildings. Each of them are two-bedroom, two-bath, single-car garages, and it's kind of designed for aging baby boomers like me, who are looking to maybe not live in the big house anymore and have something that's nice and easy and carefree from a maintenance and care standpoint. So the plans, I believe, are pretty self-explanatory. We've complied with all of the codes and ordinances, and we're excited to be in a position to move forward on developing this property. So if you have questions, we're glad to address them.
All right. Pardon?
If I have a question, I was gonna...
Is it, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question. Since it's so close to the golf course, what are you doing to protect the houses from the golf balls?
Sure. Dave?
There's actually still gonna be a 35-foot buffer of the existing tree line all the way along there, and there's an existing fence that's on the property line as well.
Like, when you say existing fence, like six foot, like, I, I'm not a golfer, so...
I, I think it's about an eight-foot fence, but the tree line that's along there is pretty dense.
Okay.
Thank you.
It does sound like a good opportunity for residents to collect golf balls and sell them.
I'm sorry. Are you gonna sell these houses or are they rental homes?
No, they're rental units.
They're rental units?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, I had an opportunity to visit the facility, which is the one located in Dearborn, and very impressed. I understand that it'll be bigger and better for Westland, which we want to happen. But not to be confused, you did mention it's a golf course property. So I just want the general public to know that it's not going to be part of the golf course. It's just on the other side and in the housing district there, which they have beautiful plans for. But I didn't know if this was the opportune time to have it addressed in relationship to what the facility is going to be, or is that not part of the administration?
This is, so PVM is proposing two projects tonight. This is for the construction of independent living ranch-style homes. And the next item is for the Pace facility, which is the facility you visited today.
Well, from the diagram and the information that we've received, it does appear to be a beautiful housing area, and definitely do look forward to seeing the construction. Thank you.
Ms. Richards, you had a question?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Oh, you have a motion?
I got one more question.
We got questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. So I'm just, right now, I'm still, I don't see the full picture, right? So I'm confused on the entryway coming in on the, I guess that'll be the east entryway. So this is supposed to be kind of roll into the next project where they'll flow together? Because right now, it looks like I'm sneaking through someone else's property to get to my property or, you know, see my grandmother.
Sure. I can address that. It's, it's in the backup in the site plans, but PVM, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, please, I believe PVM is, or has purchased the vacant TCF bank parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, we own it.
Thank you. And they're proposing two projects tonight. Pace is going to be occurring here, the ranch homes here. PVM also owns a senior living facility here, and there is internal access roads. It's kind of hard to see because of the trees. But basically, you'll enter here and drive, navigate through the internal access roads, and there'll be an access point here. And there will also be an access point here as well. So this is the eastern access point. Let me see if I have any additional. There you go. This is after development.
All right, one more, one more question. I'm promised this is it. Sidewalks, how will, you know, you got a nice community, you know, older people like to walk around the community or go to, it's a Kroger's right there. How would I be able to access getting around in the neighborhood here?
The plan does not anticipate sidewalks at this point in time. We have developed other ranch home developments like this, and they're really very low-traffic developments. Most of the residents just get out and walk in the street. So we do not have site plan, or sidewalks planned at this time. And, and I would tell you honestly, I mean, even though we do expect the, those who move in there can be 55 and older, many of the residents will participate by using the bus that we have on campus to go to shopping places, and most of them still have cars, so they will drive.
Mr. Rappaport, you had a question?
I did have a couple of comments, and thank you very much, Mr. Bra Hornbuckle, for at least preliminarily addressing my, my primary question about, about creating a, an island. So as a little bit of a follow-up to that, obviously, you can't grant an easement for access to yourself if you, if you own the two properties that would be able to, to provide a... a, an ingress or an egress from this actual parcel. However, I am concerned that, well, I have a, not a, I have a little bit of a concern that if, in the future, one of these parcels were to be, were to be sold or dispossessed for some unforeseen reason, would there be plans to grant an easement to this? Obviously, legally speaking, it would, it would be one of necessity, but it would be one created by us approving this, this particular project.
No, it's a, it's a very good question. Just as a point of reference, each of those properties will be under three different ownership interests based on how the projects are being financed. So the Village of Westland has one ownership interest, the Ranch Home Development will have another ownership interest, and the PACE Center, a third ownership interest. So there will be reciprocal easement agreements and maintenance agreements between those parties in terms of how we manage and, and keep up the maintenance and repairs of those properties.
So those easements of access will actually be created?
They will be put into place, they'll be required.
I have no concerns about that, then. My last concern is, normally, we, we don't very often see religious-based organizations coming before us for housing purposes. I guess I have to ask the obligatory question, certainly you're, you won't be discriminating on the basis of religion for rentals, is that, am I assuming correctly of you?
Yeah, you could look at our website, and it will say all faiths are welcome, and Michelle, as our Executive Director, is involved with new residents moving in all the time. I'm sure she'd be glad to, you know, reiterate that, but flat out, that's a non-issue. And if you saw the members of our Board of Directors, it's a very diverse group of individuals.
Approximately half of my family is Presbyterian, and they are good people.
Thank you.
So I, so I'm required to say.
And, and my wife is Jewish, so I'm kind of watching the Old Testament and New Testament both.
Thank you very much for, for fielding my questions, and I have nothing further.
Thank you. Ms. Richards?
Yes, I move to close out case number fifteen eighty-two C, site plan approval for proposed return at three-two-zero-zero-one Cherry Hill, south side of Cherry Hill, west of Merriman, Presbyterian Village of Michigan, and send to City Council for recommendation of approval contingent upon department, departmental requirements and recommendations.
Moved and supported? I got it, thank you very much.
Hornbuckle.
Um, roll call.
Okay, roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number fifteen eighty-two C, Duranti?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Spizak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
You're back up again, Mr. Petru. It's the twelve-twelve-twenty-eight F site plan and special land use approval for proposed PACE Center at three-sixty South Merriman, west side of Merriman Road, south of Cherry Hill Road, Presbyterian Village.
The subject property here is located on the west side of Merriman Road, just south of Cherry Hill, directly adjacent to the parcel that we just discussed. The yellow outline property comprises of about five and a half acres and is zone CB2, shopping center, commercial. The property currently contains a one-story, five thousand nine hundred ninety-square-foot vacant building previously used as a TCF bank. The petitioner proposes to renovate the existing building and build a approximately eighteen-thousand-square-foot addition to the existing building to accommodate a new facility for PACE of south, PACE Southwest, I believe that's the name, or southeast, southeast, yeah. The final total building area will be about twenty-four thousand square feet. Real quick, PACE stands for Program of All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, and is an adult daycare center that provides all-inclusive programs, medical treatment, and care to seniors. That doesn't do it justice, but I'll stop there. Couple, or well, a few site design notes that I want to read for the record. The site will continue to be accessed via two existing full-service driveways. There's a site plan here, you can kind of see them along Merriman Road there. Most of the participants, I believe, will be dropped off by bus, which will significantly reduce traffic generated by the facility. Parking is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, sixty are required, sixty-one are provided. There's some additional bus parking spaces provided just west of the building. Proposed landscaping for the parking areas, screening of Merriman and for remaining open space of the site is proposed in compliance with the zoning ordinance. There's also additional landscaping exceeding minimum requirements. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven-thirty a.m. through four-thirty The proposed building addition will be constructed using EPIS, Maestri Invenir, and I believe Split Face CMU. The existing building will remain as it exists today. Proposed building complies with all of the bulk requirements, as well as the existing, that includes height, lot coverage, and setbacks. We touched on the one-hundred-year stormwater detention area that they're proposing that will have to ultimately be approved by Wayne County. It's located, where my cursor is, over here. That's all I have. The administration and planning department recommend approval of this petition. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Petitioner, if you'll come forward again.
Hello, again.
Anything you'd like to add?
Well, just, well, you know me, I'm Kevin Petru. Seated here tonight is Gord, Gord Somerville. Gord is a managing partner of a company called Facilinet, and he's involved with all of the developments of the PACE centers in southeast Michigan. So he is kind of the answer man and very knowledgeable of PACE operations and their operating procedures. So if there are any questions as it relates more specifically to PACE and their operations, he'll be happy to address that, talk about the use, or anything else that you might have questions on. But the plan, as Mr. Ayub enumerated about, you know, meets the parking requirements, all the setbacks, and we believe will be, you know, a real jewel for the community to have a center like this to provide appropriate care for those in need.
All right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Hearing none? Ms. Folks?
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment for testimony on the waters of PACE. My mom was with PACE a few years ago, so I know firsthand exactly how PACE works. So I'm going to say first, I'm very thankful that you bring us to Westland, because she had arrived from Westland to Dearborn, just took sometimes a couple of hours, and even though I thought it was a drawback, she kind of liked it because she had to talk to a lot of friends and everything on the bus, both coming and going. And I especially liked the part where you got to the center, all your medical care was taken care of, all your medication that you needed was sent home, the oxygen she needed, all of that was delivered to the house. There were thirty people coming to the house, and also aides to take care of her, getting ready for the day in, to pick her up. At that time, I had a sick husband at the same time, so I was having problems just trying to coordinate getting both of them together. Also, I'm just thankful to say, Hannah first brings a lot of memories back, so I won't say too much more about that, but I'd like to say, welcome to Westland, and thank you for choosing Westland.
Yes, ma'am?
That's a, that's a moving testimony, thank you for that very much.
I just want to thank Michelle again, because I was one of the few people that went today out to Dearborn to see the seniors, and I had a great experience. Basically, everything she just said, we witnessed, you know, and the staff was great, and to actually see the seniors, I mean, they weren't, they weren't putting, you know, they weren't, didn't anybody come in and say, you gotta do this. They were happy, and we walked in, they was like, this is the place to be. We liked being here, so I was impressed, and thanks for being here for us, inviting us out.
Mr. Hornbuckle?
Yeah, I don't have any questions yet, but I'm sorry I missed the tour. I look forward to being able to see it, and thank you for coming to Westland.
All right.
And if you did want to tour it at some point, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to arrange that.
All right, thank you.
Motion's in order.
My question before any motion is made is more of a procedural thing, and I do apologize for being the, the rule monger for today.
That's okay, go ahead.
I do note that case number one-two-two-eight-F is a site plan and special land use approval. Should this appropriately be a public hearing?
All right. Since it is.
It is not listed on our agenda as a public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this? On my right? On my right? On my left? Apparently not. Motion's in order.
To your credit, Mr. Vice Chairman, you did already ask for citizen commentary, so we were covered. I just want to make sure that the motion is created appropriately.
Well, thank you, I always need somebody to take care of it.
And I will actually take that motion if nobody else would, would care to.
Please.
It's only fair. Regarding case number one-two-two-eight-F, site plan and special land use approval for proposed PACE Center, three-sixty South Merriman Road, west side of Merriman Road, south Cherry Hill Road, Presbyterian Villages of Michigan, move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send this case to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Duranti. You know what? This one is pretty easy.
Okay, so, recommending approval of case number twelve-twenty-eight-F, sorry, Duranti?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Spizak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. It sounds like a good deal, go ahead.
Which location? Appreciate it.
She was at the Dearborn.
Dearborn, okay. Okay, thanks.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks.
Proposed land division, zero-nine-nine-six-A, fourteen-twenty-one South Vanoye, east side of Vanoye, south side of Parkwood, Westland Free Methodist Church. Mr. Lofssinger?
Yes.
Yes, sir. If you come up forward, you're the petitioner.
I will give a quick presentation.
Go ahead.
That's okay, okay. The subject property is Zoned R5, single-family residential, and developed with an existing church and a home associated with, with the existing church. The petitioner is seeking approval to split off the property, as it exists on your screen today, into four separate parcels to sell off. This is a street view, and this is a survey showing the splits, four parcels being created here. Parcel A, in this northeast corner, vacant, approximately half of an acre. Parcel B is where the church building exists. There's an easement on it for the house, which is on Parcel C. Parcel B is a, the regular-shaped lot here, and that's about three and a half acres. Parcel C is the existing home. There's no access for, associated with Parcel C, however, can kind of see it over here. They are providing an easement for access from Parcel B, where the church exists. And then finally, Parcel D, four-point-three acres, is also currently vacant. Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval. Thanks.
You have anything to add, sir?
I don't think so, I think you covered it pretty well. Yeah, thank you, sir.
What you going to do with the big piece? You got any idea?
Uh, no, I mean, not, not at this point. No, we, we've moved already to Warren Road, and so, you know, our, our goal was to be able to, you know, parcel this off in a way where the different pieces of land could get their best use and really serve the community well, and so our hope is that, moving forward, you know, that would, that would be able to happen, so we wouldn't develop it, you know, ourselves, we would, you know, leave that up to whoever has a vision for that area.
Been a long time since a farm has been on a property.
Yeah, yeah.
Members, anyone in the audience that wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none? Members of the board? Do we have anybody? Sir?
Very quickly, to the, to the administration, the, I, I'm not sure I, I saw the, the division, the proposed division correctly, but it does look like there's a structure close to the division line that's not going to cause any setback issues, is it?
Uh, this, there is, it is compliant with, you're talking, I'm sorry, you're referring about...
Uh, item C here.
Uh, yeah, it is, it is setback almost ten feet, so it is compliant with the five-yard setback requirement.
Okay, thank you, I obviously wasn't reading it correctly.
Yeah, no, on C, when we looked at that initially, it seemed a little tight, and I think we've added fifteen feet or twenty feet between C and D extra, just to try and boost that space a little bit.
It just looked a little tight.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
I have nothing.
Huh? Anybody wish to make a motion? Go ahead.
Don't be shy.
Don't be shy. Ms. Richards?
I move to close, I'll close this hour.
All right.
I move to send case number zero-nine-nine-six-A, proposed land division, one-four-two-one South Vanoye Road, east side of Vanoye, south side of Parkwood, West Free Methodist, and send to City Council for recommendation of approval.
Supported by, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
You did, oh, supported by Mr. Rappaport?
Better.
Oh, I'm sorry, supported by, I'm going to take it away from you.
That's fine.
Supported by Ms. Folks. Are there any questions regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? So move.
Right.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Forward and upward. The case number fourteen forty-two-A, thank you very much, sir, good luck. Site plan approval for proposed gas station, retail store addition at thirty-five four-twenty-five Ford Road, southwest corner of Ford and Wayne Road, it's a Sunoco gas station now, it used to be a fruit market a long time ago. Anybody, we have Mr., all right, more if you will, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Subject property here is about fourteen thousand square feet in area, zone CB4, vehicle service district, and currently developed with the Sunoco gas station. There is a nine-hundred-twenty-square-foot retail building on the site in addition to the Gas Island's fueling stations and canopy. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval to renovate the existing facade and construct a seven-hundred-seventy-two-square-foot addition, bringing the total footprint to approximately seventeen hundred square feet. Existing access points will remain the same, I believe, two at, one at Ford Road and one at Wayne. There are seventeen off-street, seventeen off-street parking spaces are required. The site contains seven appropriately-dimensioned off-street parking spaces... Uh, the site contains seven appropriately dimensioned off-street parking spaces. Uh, therefore, a parking variance is required. Uh, just for the record, the spaces reserved for gas pumps are not incorporated and are, are not allowed to be counted, uh, towards, uh, satisfying the parking requirement per the zoning ordinance. Uh, the proposed addition and facade renovations will be constructed primarily, uh, using limestone material. Uh, this is a rendering on your screen. Uh, accent materials will, uh, include EFS. Um, the site contains existing screening and landscaping along the street sides already in conformance with, uh, previously approved site plan and the zoning ordinance. Uh, the site also contains, uh, DDA streetscape, uh, including the decorative fence. A new dumpster enclosure, uh, will be constructed just west of the building addition. Uh, existing site lighting will be improved. There's some existing poles, uh, that need to be adjusted to comply with the height requirement. Um, there's some unnecessary posts, uh, throughout the site that, uh, are being removed as a, as a condition of, uh, permitting. Uh, there's also some overgrown vegetation throughout the perimeter of the site, which we've asked, uh, to be addressed. Uh, we'll make sure that happens before permitting the project. Uh, and also as part of the site plan approval, there's existing curbing throughout the site that will be, uh, updated and replaced. Um, some highlights for bulk requirements, I'll only include the ones that are not being complied with. The side yard setback, um, is required to be thirty feet. Uh, proposed is nineteen feet nine inches and twenty-seven feet six inches. A variance is required for this. The rear yard is required to be thirty feet. Uh, proposed is eight feet two inches. A variance is required for that. And then finally, uh, building height, um, the ordinance requires the maximum to be equal to the distance from the nearest property line. And the existing building is, uh, four feet, four inches away from the property line. Um, obviously, the building is taller than that. Uh, the proposal is eighteen feet eight inches, so a variance is, uh, required for that. Four total variances being, um, proposed and asked for, so the city, uh, administration and planning department are recommending this petition, um, be forwarded with a recommendation to approve, uh, contingent upon, uh, obtaining all the required variances from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, just real quickly here, this is what the site plan, uh, existing conditions looks like. Specifically, the building outline. And this is what it's going to look like with the addition. Just a slight addition on this side with, with the new dumpster enclosure here. No modifications to the existing pump islands or, uh, the canopy. Happy to answer any questions. I know the architect is in the audience, maybe even the business owner, I believe. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Ness, sir.
You are Mr.?
Sure care.
And you are the petitioner?
Yes.
Any, anything to add?
Uh, actually, he, he covered most of the, uh,
He got it right.
items. I mean, I'm here only for any questions.
It seems like there might be a considerable amount of variances. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's a tight side.
All right. Um, anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Not? No? And let's, uh, go right to the, um, yes, sir?
The, uh, long-winded guy at the end.
Yeah, right.
Uh, so, the first thing, before I get into this, I, uh, I wanted to say that the, uh, the Ford and Wayne, the Ford and Wayne corner there, uh, it can definitely use the, uh, renovation, so we do appreciate your, uh, your petition. Uh, and we certainly wanted to go forward, uh, in the best way possible. Uh, so, I had a couple of questions. Uh, I think, I thank the administration for making it clear that we, uh, that we should make this, uh, approval if we do move forward contingent upon the, uh, the ZBA requirements. Uh, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the, uh, about the parking, uh, the parking space issue. It looked to me from the two, the existing and the proposed site plan, that there are actually no, uh, parking lot, the parking spaces that are going to be eliminated. Is that true?
Uh, I think they might even be, uh, picking up one or two, uh, just because of the dimensioning and study of the site. However, it's still, uh, out of compliance, and because there's an addition, um, it has to be treated, uh, as, as due construction.
Right, okay. Um, so, I guess this, uh, this question is best, uh, is best, uh, directed towards the petitioner. Uh, and once again, it has to do with the, uh, parking situation. Uh, this is obviously an, an ongoing and currently running business, correct?
Yes.
With a similar, if not less, number of, uh, parking places?
Yes.
And do you, uh, are you, are you aware of the, uh, of the day-to-day operations of the, uh, of the business?
Um, yes.
And are you aware of any, uh, of any parking issues that currently exist?
Actually, uh, that's what I want to answer. Uh, your, your question is about that we're expanding the building, and we still have the same parking, probably. That's what's, okay. Uh, the, the building itself, it's, uh, too small of a building to, uh, carry more than, uh, walk in, uh, seven people, uh, or seven, uh, cars, let's say, and each car have one person in it. So, the, the, the C store inside that building is not, uh, uh, I mean, if we do the calculation, not the whole building, just the C store where we, uh, have people going in, it's, it's gonna be enough parking under the canopy and, uh, what we have, seven, seven parking plus the one under the canopy, which is about eight. But of course, the ordinance, uh, would say you cannot count the one under the canopy. But this is not a supermarket, so we would have people coming in and parking in. You know, the people who's gonna fill gas, they're gonna come in and, uh, purchase a couple items in there or pay for their gas or lottery. And the seven parking, I would assume, they would be used for, uh, 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 as a percentage case, how, how, how much people would, uh, be invited into that site and use these parking. So, uh, to us, uh, I mean, uh, we're, uh, we're trying to fix the building up and the site, and bring it up to, uh, as much as we can up to code. And, uh, to, to, to give a nice reflect to the, uh, corner, and this is a very important corner. And if you go there now, it's not like how it's supposed to be, you know, the gas station. So what we're doing there, we're enhancing the site.
You want to make it prettier?
Yes. And, uh, it is, I mean, as you see the, uh, the way, we're, we're putting good material on the building. We're putting limestone and, uh, brick, and, uh, we're making it a little bit, uh, more convenient for the customers when they come in. So it would be, uh, something, I mean, uh, it would, it would be, uh, more, uh, convenient for customers.
Uh, that's all I have.
Mr. Duranty?
Um, on your new, in your new site, you get approval, and you build a new building, are you going to be serving hot food in there?
Actually, uh, not really. Uh, it's gonna be like, uh, probably would have a, uh, uh, cooler with the cold food, but we cannot prep food in there.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna sell sandwiches and stuff like that?
Yes, a company would come and put them in a cooler, and we can sell them.
Okay, but you're not gonna be preparing them?
So they're, they're, they're pre-made, like, um, and,
You're not gonna be preparing them there?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, excuse me, my name is Ali. Uh, I'm actually the owner of the property. I just, I wanted to answer Chairman David, uh, Rappaport's question.
And what's your name, please?
My name is Ali.
Ali?
Yes.
You got a last name, too?
M- McDad, M-E-K-D-A-D.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, he asked that with the new renovations, are we actually picking up additional parking spots to what's currently there now? And the answer is yes. According to, uh, Planning Director Ayub, I believe it was either two or three.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Statchow.
Yes, hi. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the, uh, new facelift on, uh, your area and the additional convenience for your people coming to, uh, uh, have their gas, uh, filled up. And then, like you had mentioned, uh, getting an opportunity to run in, get a cup of coffee, or a little, uh, quick, uh, snack off the shelves, right? I think that was your intention?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, appreciate that, and thank you very much for, uh, beautifying our area.
Thank you. Stop and go.
That's it? Anybody have a motion? Go ahead.
Okay. I move to send case number one four four two A, site plan approval for proposed gas station retail store addition at three five four two five Ford Road, southwest corner of Ford Road and Wayne Road, Sunoco gas station, and send to city council for recommendation of approval contingent upon department, departmental recommendations and requirements and subject to all required variances being granted by the zoning board of appeals.
Moved and supported. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission? Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number fourteen forty-two A. Uh, Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Uh, Richards?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Hornbuck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck, guys.
God bless.
Uh, case number fifteen sixty-six B, special land use approval for proposed daycare facility at thirty-five two seventy Nankin Boulevard, north of Nankin, west of Wayne Road. Ms. Delina Robinson. Mr. Ayub?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Saving the best for last. Uh, the subject property is located within the Nankin Professional, uh, Center on the north side of Nankin Boulevard, just west of Wayne Road. Uh, the overall property comprises of about six acres. Now, that's the entire, uh, office complex outlined in yellow on your screen. Uh, it's currently Zoned CB two shopping center, commercial business district. Uh, and as you may know, Nankin Professional Center includes a variety of office type uses, uh, with some currently vacant units scattered throughout the site. Uh, the, uh, petitioner proposes to locate a child daycare center in an existing, uh, twenty-five hundred square foot vacant space, um, uh, outlined in red on your screen. Uh, the center will be, uh, able to accommodate between fifty and sixty students, ranging from infants to children twelve years of age. Uh, the center will employ between six and twelve teachers, depending on enrollment levels. Uh, food will be catered, uh, and there will be no, uh, s- food service on-site. Uh, the hours of operation will be Monday through, uh, Friday from six AM to seven PM. Uh, just to clarify, the, uh, the childcare center is not occupying that entire building encompassing that red outline. Uh, it's, it's, um, occupying a portion of it, a good portion of it, but there is a portion that I believe is currently, uh, being leased out to an office tenant. Uh, the site is accessed, uh, via two full-service, uh, driveways, uh, off of Nankin, one over here and one over here. Uh, the site complies with the previously approved site plan, uh, and required parking spaces. There's sufficient, sufficient access and parking being provided on-site to accommodate not only the existing uses, but the proposed childcare facility. Uh, the site includes existing screening, uh, and landscaping along the street size, sides, uh, well, along Nankin, um, the property lines. There's also a, uh, six-foot-tall masonry screening wall in the back that's in pretty good condition, um, separating the multifamily residential from the office use. Um, we had, I had a conversation, just for the record, with, uh, one of the, I believe, the tenant, uh, that is operating, um, within the building that the, uh, daycare is proposed in. Um, and it sounded, or appeared to be a welcomed addition, uh, to the complex. Um, noted nothing, um, of that nature in terms of childcare being offered in the area, um, and that it was, uh, uh, use that all of the professionals within the office complex benefit from. Um, I don't have anything further, um, from what I've said on the record and contained in your backup, but the administration and planning department is recommending approval, and the business owner, uh, is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Ms. Robinson?
Hi.
You have anything to add?
No, I don't have to say.
Not really. Uh, anyone in the audience? Nobody? Just us, right? Go ahead.
Will you be accommodating, um, children with special needs?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And will you be able to have them?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my question was on after-school care, since you're gonna be sending kids up to twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Will they be bused there, parents dropped off?
Uh, we will, um, at this time, we don't have transportation, but we will be getting transportation where we will bring them into the, to the school. We'll pick them up and bring them back and forth.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, so, uh, since it's a childcare, uh, kids will be coming and leaving all day long, right?
Well, it depends on the times. Normally, our schedule, because most parents drop them off in the morning, and then they pick them up afternoon. So our busiest time is gonna be between seven and eight-thirty is our normal busiest, busiest times. And then in the afternoon, when pickup, which is normally between, and we're between five and seven, where we are busiest.
So, uh, my, my main question is, uh, kids going outside to play. And how do you have, like, any, how are you gonna handle that? Cause kids out playing in the street, I don't see, like, a,
Uh, we have an area along the side of five oh, five oh one, that's gonna have a closed-in area with a fence and everything for the kids to go directly into and play.
And are you gonna have a designated drop-off spot, control traffic coming in and out?
Yes, so when the parents come in, they're gonna come on one side, and then they can go out on the other side, cause it has two ways in and out of that location.
And, and, um, the property owner and, uh, business around there understand that? Cause that's gonna affect them as well?
Yes, um, Starfish is actually a company that's over there, um, that has kids that come in and do the same thing. They, they're a therapist sa- center that actually works with my company as far as with us. We work together. Cause I already have a daycare in Westland now, in my home. So.
And you say everything is, uh, lunch and everything is catered, right?
Yes, it's gonna be brought, brought in. Only thing we'll, we'll prepare or have is snacks and stuff like that in our areas. Can I have that?
I think I'm done for now. Yep.
Uh, Mr. Duranty?
Uh, question?
Yes.
How do you safeguard the children in the facility? Are the doors locked?
Oh, sir, uh, we have just the, the, when the door is closed, they, they're automatically closed and stuff, and we're inside, so we don't have any issues with them getting out. Or we have baby gates, I guess I don't,
I'm not talking about that as much as, let's say I come there and I say, oh, I'm supposed to pick up Junior today. And I've never been there before.
Well,
What safeguards do you have for that type of situation?
So we, when you come in, there's a, a location that you have to come through to be buzzed in to get to the kids. You come to their desk. You have to show picture ID if we don't know you, and then we verify who you are, and then we go back and grab the kid, the children for you and bring them out. So it's not an easy access, it's cause you're coming through one door, and then you have to go through another one. But you have to be buzzed in.
Thank you.
Mr. Rappaport?
Thank you very much. And before I, uh, before I begin, I'd like to, well, thank Ms. Robinson for her immense patience today.
It was really, it was really informative, so I learned a lot, so I enjoy.
Once again, I note that, uh, we're on a special land use approval on this case. Uh, is this appropriately a, uh, a public hearing?
Supposed to be.
Once again, it's, it's a public hearing.
Okay. Yes, it's supposed to be.
So please note that, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
And as a, as a public hearing, obviously, there are certain concerns that we would have that would be extraordinary than, than normal. Uh, obviously, the, uh, the security concerns would be one of them. Another concern that we, uh, that we commonly see in, uh, in, uh, special land use cases is, uh, noise. And, uh, I, I personally know that, uh, small children, uh, can get a little ran-bunches. I know that the, uh, the buildings are separated.
Yes.
Which should help quite a bit with,
Yes.
with, uh, with, With, uh, with noise abatement for your neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, uh, I guess I was hoping maybe, uh, you could, and before I have you answer, I want to, well, I wanna tell you that my, uh, my special needs niece, uh, actually works with, uh, with a daycare in, in Westland. And she comes home with all sorts of crazy stories about the-
I can, I can make millions if I can, uh, show these, these little ones to. There's something else.
Spend just a few moments and tell us a little bit about, uh, your, uh, your expectations, uh, code of conduct for your students.
So basically, for our little ones, we basically give them a guideline that we would like them to follow as far as, you know, behavior. You know, doing the right things and showing how to do things, you know? As long as we show them that, they pretty much will follow. When any kid, you know, they're gonna be kids. You can't just keep them quiet all day. But we show them, you know, inside voice, outside voice, basically being polite to others. When, you know, if you got a problem, how to communicate that without, oh, we screaming or yelling about it. Um, basically, the nice thing about the building is we are set off where our neighbors is not very close. Uh, when we're outside, you know, we're gonna have the fenced-in yard so that everybody can't hear them as much, as far as if we had like our wired fence or something like that, or things like that, where it's more closed in and they can have more being kids. So outside, I'm not gonna be able to control as much as the noise because they're kids, but we won't be out there all day. So, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
I have one more question. If you say you have two kids in, right?
Yes.
Or how do you deal with kids that has special, you know, special dietary needs?
So basically, so let's say we have a kid that has peanut allergies and stuff like that. We'll let that, when our friends come in, they know that. We, we have to, uh, set it, we have to follow that by the state law.
Yes, sir?
Uh, I just had a question about the number of people in the building. Uh, I'm not for sure what the regulation is, but is that, uh, any violation for the fire department with fifty, sixty kids plus, uh, twelve adults in that building? Is that any, no? Okay.
Probably gotten it covered, right?
The state actually regulates that number, yes.
Okay. Now, anything else? A motion is in order.
You wanna? Do it.
Okay. I, we are a public hearing now, right? I move to close the public hearing. And, uh, and-
Please remember to wave the normal rules.
And wave the mo- normal rules.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, send, uh, case number one five six six B. Special land use approved for proposed daycare facility at three five two seven zero Nankin Boulevard, north side of Nankin, west of Wayne Road. And, um, also that, uh, this petition, uh, to be forwarded to, uh, with recommendation for approval, uh, contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any other questions? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fokes, did you support? You support? Okay, sorry. All right, uh, roll call vote to approve case, recommend approval of case number fifteen sixty-six. B, Duranti?
Yes.
Fokes? Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Spizak?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Thank you guys so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good luck at council.
Mr. Ayub, you got anything for us?
Uh, I don't have anything. I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
Motion to close?
Motion, motion to adjourn? All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed? So moved.